I'm sorry. It has been so advertised, and I'll ask Fred to call a roll.
Okay. Ms. Riley? Mrs. Papel? Mrs. Buchko?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Tabey? Mr. Fink?
Yeah.
Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
And Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Okay, we'll ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is in the rear of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's no executive session this evening, so we'll go to item three. Is there a motion to go into Committee of the Whole?
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved in secret. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're now in a Committee of the Whole. Who has something to bring to the board at this point in time, Theresa?
Where do we start? Where do you want to start?
Oh, we can start anywhere you want. Pick something.
Let's start with music.
Okay.
So. I wonder if, I think not the whole board is informed yet, so probably some background would be helpful. So maybe if Ms. Bolden or Dr. McDowell can give some background on what's going on with the music instruction program for fourth and fifth graders.
Thank you. So, we still have a music program, general music for kindergarten through fifth grade. Oakland has always had a band program. The band program has been cut over the years. So back in 2019, our band program was just for fourth and fifth grade students to take instrumental music lessons during the day here at Oakland. And then they would have to go over to the Collingswood Elementary School Band rehearsals as a large group after school hours to participate in elementary band. So our students do still have the opportunity to do elementary band over in Collingswood, but we ran into a problem providing the instrumental music lessons because of a scheduling conflict. So when the pandemic hit, we shifted our schedules from nine to one, and we were able to make the band instruction work for those two years because most of it was virtual. And when we decided to come back full time and in person this year, the Collingswood Middle School aligned their schedule to meet the needs of the students since they weren't waking up till very late during COVID. They didn't think they would get them in at 7:30 in the morning, so they adjusted their arrival time. That was good in one way because it kind of put us all on the same schedule so that the teachers that shared services weren't going into Collingswood early and then leaving here early so that I wouldn't get to meet with them after school or whatnot. So it kind of put us on a good path with the schedules being aligned, but then that kind of pushed their courses back a little bit, causing our shared music instructor Lori Ludwig to get here about 40 minutes later in the day. That 40 minutes would have been used for those band lessons in the past, for preparation and band lessons. So we did not foresee that coming, and since band does not start in September, all the schedules were already done and complete. And when we figured out there was an issue, it was a little alarming, and it's going to be the challenge because once you change one schedule at the middle school or even elementary level, it causes a ripple effect for every single classroom that has something scheduled. But Jennifer McPartlin, Mr. McMullin, myself, Beth Ann Whitehouse have been working on a solution. So we've been tearing apart the schedules, which we just kind of finished the other night, and we have a tentative plan that might help us get band lessons in place for our fifth grade students who were already taking the lessons over the summer, who have their instruments. But I do not know if it will be enough time in her schedule to provide band lessons to new fourth grade students who would like to experiment with an instrument this year. So more information to come. We're still working out that schedule, but there's only so many minutes in a day. And with teacher contractual time with preps and lunch and traveling from one school to the next and getting here at a certain time, there are only so many ways we can work that magic before we run out of options. And I know Mrs. Coleman was looking at both the budgets in Collingswood and Oakland. Please know this wasn't just an Oakland issue. Collingswood ran into the same problem. They have not started instrumental music lessons with their students yet either because of scheduling conflicts. So both districts are working on a solution right now. Like I said, I think we have a tentative plan to at least get band lessons started for our fifth grade students who were already currently in band last year. Again, more information to come, but we're hoping to maybe bring more hands on board in the future so that we can have a more robust instrumental music program moving forward in Oakland.
Ms. Bolden, can I ask, or Dr. McDowell, the tentative plan which I, you know, I think we all appreciate for fifth graders, is it going to be the same for the Collingswood Elementary Schools?
I do not.
Or are they going to be able to offer for fourth grade?
I do not know.
That part we're still working out. I know that some schools are affected more than others. But we're, what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that no school is negatively affected. When this was brought to my attention, I immediately requested that the Oakland School and the Middle School go back to the drawing board and look at the schedule so that fourth and fifth graders were not denied instrumental lessons. So we're still going to work on it, and we're going to try to see if we can shift some additional staff at some of the other schools in order to offset so that Oakland is not affected. But it's, it's multiple schools that are involved, all of the elementary schools in Collingswood as well as Oakland School and the Middle School. So we're gonna, we're gonna keep working through it, and we are potentially going to be able to bring in a part-time staffer in order to offset two or three sections to make it work, but we're still working on it.
I guess another question that I have is, so when the decision was made that the schedule was going to change, I just feel like if it was going to negatively affect curricula at any school, it should have been brought to this forum, it should have been brought to the board, it should have been discussed at some level at the curriculum committee. I'm not the chair of that committee, so I will defer to Denise, but I just, for most parents, and admittedly I am a parent of a fifth grader who, that we paid for rental of an instrument. She learned it on Zoom, which was impossible, but she did it, and Ms. Ludwig was amazing. And then we paid for the instrument all summer so that she could keep practicing. And then as parents, we found out through her, not through the school, not, and then I didn't hear about it through the board. So I just want to address that communication issue.
Yes, I can address that as well. I did bring it. We did not find out about it. It's not something that we knew about in August before the schedules were made. This is something that was dropped on my desk like the third week of September. You probably heard about it a week after I did. I did immediately inform Mrs. Coleman, and she did put it on the agenda for you guys to discuss at the next meeting, which you found out right before the next meeting. So unfortunately, this wasn't something we planned to keep from anybody. It just happened that I found out, parents found out, Beth Ann was finding out at the same time and put it on an agenda to be discussed, and we hadn't made it to that committee meeting yet. So unfortunately, that's how it happened. So this is something that the teacher didn't even know about, nor did I, until she really sat down and looked and said, wow, there's no many more, no, there's no many minutes. There's no, there's no minutes left in the day for me to squeeze this in because it used to be a puzzle piece. When I tell you she barely squeezed it in as it was, I mean barely squeezed it in last year. So she really did not see it coming either. We only share two staff members with Collingswood, and it's just always worked out so well that nobody really thought, oh, we're pushing that back, it's going to affect this so dramatically. I found out, like I said, a week before, you probably did, because I heard it from her, and then I informed Beth Ann, and she was going to discuss it with you at the next committee meeting.
I got a question. You said you informed Beth Ann. Did you inform the superintendent?
Yes.
At the same time?
Yes.
Just seems like Beth Ann isn't really, shouldn't be the one you should be informing. You should be informing the superintendent.
Well, we were looking at it through a budget standpoint, too. We were requesting additional staff.
Yes, my request would be, once the superintendent finds out that the board's informed, that it's a problem and that we're addressing it, right?
So part of the process is not to bring a problem to the board, it's to bring a solution. So because lessons have not started yet, we were still trying to work through. In hindsight, we should have made a more concerted effort to present publicly that there was an issue that we were working on. But because this is still in flux and we are still trying to work through the solution prior to the start of the said lessons, we chose to work behind the scenes so we could actually come to the board with actual options to consider opposed to just dropping a problem.
I just, and I hear you. I just, we were at the August meeting at the middle school, and instrumental lessons was included in that presentation. And so it's a change. And in that presentation, it says we'd start in early October. We're now in mid-October, right? This is something that my daughter did last year and had a lot of trouble on Zoom and was looking forward to trying something different this year. But specifically, my fourth grader has been talking about this for three years. Like, she's ready to go. And I'm eager to find a solution to this problem, and I really hope that fourth grade is not left out. So that's my request.
Can I just have been, I mean, I wasn't at the committee meeting. I missed it admittedly, and I heard about it later. But it sounds to me like, you know, it might have been mentioned in August, but we didn't know the problem until September. And then it was handled the proper way, which is to take it to the committee meeting, not to send an email blast out to us or something ahead of time. And I just, I don't want us to get confused with what we should, like, we want to hear as parents and what we want to hear as board members.
I agree. It was just concerning for me to hear about it from my daughter.
No, I understand being upset, but I think we have to make sure that we're keeping the line separate between what we're doing, what the process is for being on the board and the way we might feel as parents.
Colleen, I totally agree with you, but I'm going to tell you that we were told by our children that there was an announcement, that there would be no lessons. As opposed to, but that's a little bit different than what we're hearing right now.
And that was not anything that was discussed at the district level, that there should have been an announcement.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. So that, I mean, I wouldn't, when I hear an announcement from a 10-year-old, that seems legit.
I understand that completely. I'm just saying that I think that that's one of the things that gets tricky sometimes because she did, she found out the information, she told who she had to do, they put it on the agenda, and it went. Maybe something came out before, maybe it should have come out before separately. That's a different issue, and I just want to make sure that it's, you know, I mean, I'm not saying everything happened perfectly, but I'm just saying.
I do not agree with how the parents found out, and that should not have happened. That was not a directive from me. We would have handled that in a parent email or something that I could have sent out prior to that.
And I just want to.
It would be nice, I'm sorry, but the Board of Education in Oakland hears very little. I mean, we're not told anything. You know, I feel like I'm a mushroom, and I don't need that. I don't need to wait till I have a solution. I need to know there's a problem. Maybe I can do something, maybe I can't, but I have to know about it. And some of these folks are probably here to discuss the same thing tonight. We can make it available to them and let them know what's going on. But when we don't know anything about it, that's not acceptable. Yeah, I'm sorry, we've known about it since September, and here it is, October 19th, and we don't have a solution. Now, we're going to work one. Well, that doesn't do these kids any good. Their year is running, the fourth graders. They can go to the band in Collingswood, the elementary band in Collingswood. That's great, but they don't know how to play an instrument. So what are we doing for them? We're not doing anything for them.
We're not starting band in Collingswood because we don't have the program at Collingswood.
Collingswood has no elementary schools that are with music lessons right now.
She said it wasn't, that's hitting everybody. It's not targeting. We're not targeting.
That was the rumor that Collingswood had it and we didn't.
They have always had the band program, but that's separate from the instrumental music lessons. They all gather after school. But right now, our roadblock is they have to learn how to play the instruments first before we gather them after school, but that's across Collingswood and Oakland.
And I don't know what we're doing to get them to the point where they can play an instrument.
We are literally working on schedules down to the minute.
Next year's budget, next year's budget is not a solution. That's ridiculous. They haven't talked about that. We have to solve the problem now.
I think that's what they're trying to do. That's the question I got.
Well, we're six weeks down the road from the start of school.
Right, but they also didn't start band until October. She found out about it mid-September. She brought it to the board and sent everything. They're figuring it, they're working.
Wait, 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 back up. We brought it to the board? When?
To the committee meeting is what I'm talking about. I'm sorry.
Which committee meeting?
I'll clarify. It was actually added to the finance committee meeting, agenda, not curriculum. And so that's also a difference.
Not blowing to the board.
The point is, they're trying to come up with a solution. It is affecting everybody. It is not targeted to us, and they're working on it. And no, it's not perfect. No, maybe we can hindsight say, oh, we should have done this, we should have done that, but we can't spend our time focused on that. They're working on a solution. We have to move forward. Otherwise, it's just going to take longer anyway.
How about a little thing like telling the board that we have a problem?
That's my concern here, yeah. Is there a way that when situations like this come up, that we can just be informed and say, there's an issue, here it is, we're letting you know, and this is what we've done? We don't have to wait for a committee meeting because it could be three weeks, you know, it's just, it's really difficult when you're grocery shopping and somebody stops you and says, what about the band? And you're like, sometimes there's just no way of looking like you don't know.
Small town problems.
Yeah, you know, exactly. And it happens all the time, you know, and it would just be nice to be able to say, yes, we've been informed, they're working on it, we'll have more at the board meeting. But if we don't even know about these things, we feel like real idiots. So maybe we can change that policy to where, you know, when things, if anything comes up that will be, I mean, almost everything's a community issue and that we're working on. We really just need to be informed before with a little email that this is what's going on, this keeps us in the loop, and then we don't feel like the mushrooms.
Agreed. Okay, now, the music. What are we doing on the music program? Not, not we're working on it. What specifically are we doing?
As I stated, we looked at the schedule down to the last minute, and we believe that she has just enough time to fit our fifth graders in only at this point. So if we start with the students who were in the program last year, have the instruments that they've been renting all summer, who've been very excited about it, that is our starting point. We will probably need more hands, which requires hiring possibly, and we do not know when we will find someone because there are not a lot of staff members out there applying. So that will create an issue unless we look at the staff members in Collingswood, once they figure out their schedule and there's some wiggle room within some of their staff member's schedules and they would like to come over here as well. So it's a little more complicated.
Are you actively looking for a, like, a fill-in music teacher, a fill-in instrumental teacher?
Not at this time because we haven't decided how much time we need.
So let me, let me weigh in because I think that there needs to be some additional context. Staffing is going to be a core challenge regardless. So what, where we are as of right now is we are trying to make some fundamental shifts on the Collingswood side so that fourth grade is unaffected in terms of instrumental music. We're talking about a shuffling of six schools, and that's what we're prepared to do because we do not want fourth grade to go a year without instrumental lessons. So I think that part of this challenge, I want to be also mindful that there is an entire host, I'm not making excuses, there was a breakdown in communication, I own it. There was a breakdown in communication. There's also been a multitude of additional information that has gone and really trying to strike the balance. So I'm not making excuses for the, for the lapse. The timing could have been better. But in terms of some of the other issues that we've been dealing with to keep schools open, this was not at the same scale of priority. We now have had a, we have now had a moment to breathe, and when it was brought to our attention, the first expectation was, we can't let this persist. So we need to go back to the drawing board in order to make sure that our fourth and fifth graders in Oakland were unaffected. So that's what we're working on. None of our elementary students are participating in instrumental music lessons because of this. Our priority right now is making sure that all students, with Oakland being the priority because the shared services is what's throwing this off, making sure that fourth and fifth graders have that benefit. But I think that, you know, making sure that we are being mindful of the environment. So just hiring new staff, that's not an option. There's a nationwide shortage. There's a regional shortage. We are already short in terms of instructional aids. We are short in teachers. We are short long-term subs. Our core focus is to keep schools safe and to keep them open. That means that some delays are going to happen. That means that some start times are going to be delayed. That means that some services will be reduced. Instrumental music is not one of them. We're working on this, and as soon as we have a solution, we will bring that to the board so that children can receive the benefit.
And we also hope that it works out for Collingswood because that makes the band, the Oakland and the Collingswood students make the elementary band. So we need all of them.
So just, just a general question. I don't know if I'm getting into too specifics right now. Obviously, staffing is going to be an issue. Also, working within the confines of the schedule is a big factor as well. I know firsthand since I'm a teacher over at Collingswood Middle School. Would looking into or discussing lessons before or after school be an option, something on the table that could be discussed as a possible remedy? Thanks.
And can we advertise for a teacher? Now, it's saying, gee, there's not any available. That's fine, and you're probably right. I don't know about music teachers, but classroom teachers, yes, there's a shortage. But if we don't advertise, we're never going to find anybody. So we have to do something proactive. We have to do it now and get this rolling to solve the problem as best we can.
The other thing I'd request is that I don't want to wait till next meeting to find out the status. You know, as soon as you know anything, either one, good news or bad news, I would like to know, as Chris said, I don't want to be sitting in my front yard or something like that, have somebody else come by me and start sneering at me and I can't give them an answer. I mean, if the answer is we're working on it, you know, we're trying to find candidates, we haven't found anybody, that's fine. But as soon as you find out, I think, good or bad, you have to let us know, please.
Okay, anyone else on that subject?
I guess really quick, one last thing is like, not only whatever the outcome is, we'd like to see maybe the options for the outcome. So as the board, we could help maybe decide on what we think would be the better solution and say, if it's A, B, or C, give us some, some say in whether it is A, B, or C instead of just like we've decided it's going to be B.
Respectfully, the individuals that are going to be helping to decide the choices and the outcomes are going to be the principals, not the board, not superintendent. We will direct them. So the desired outcome is to make sure that all fourth and fifth grade students have access to instrumental lessons. How we get to that, that choice, the shuffling is really going to have to take place at the school level. So we're going to hold them accountable to making that shuffle, and we're going to give them the resource for them to be able to fill in. But in terms of the options, they're going to come back to us based on those variables and share what those options are. And then we're going to, we're going to bring that to the board and say, this is what we're looking at, and this is what we're, and this is what we're thinking.
Okay, got it.
Okay, I'm going to show everybody my ignorance now, as if I had to show it to you, right? But could we hire a, as an independent contractor, a music teacher to come in and give lessons? They'd have to pass the background check and do that, but they wouldn't have to be a certified teacher, would they?
I just go back to this. I said before, my mother was a K to six music teacher. And originally, she only had her master's in music, but for her to teach in school, she had to have the education credits. She had, she had to be a certified teacher.
To teach music?
Yep.
Music lessons.
The only thing you have to be careful of, Bill, is that what do you advertise for? What do we need? Do we need someone before school and after school? Do we need them during the day? And this all becomes very apparent to someone who is applying for a job. They need to know the parameters so that that can fit into their life. You'd be lucky to find someone who is kind of like free and can do it all, you know, it would be great. So that's the problem with advertising before you really know what you need. And we don't want to go through this process and find out, oh, we still have another problem that we can't, this person can't get from one school to the other. So as quickly as they can, put this all together and then get that out to advertise, that makes this so much easier. So we'll ask that they keep us updated on maybe a weekly basis as to how this is going, if this would make everybody feel better. This is what we've done. This is where we are, and so that we can feel comfortable that they're, you know, on this and making progress. We still would have to advertise. We still would have to interview. We still would have to check credentials. We still, you're right, you know what I mean?
For a certified teacher, yes.
But at this particular point in time.
And that was my question. Can a, a music, a musician teach, yeah, instrumental music?
With the right certification, yes.
With just music lessons, not, not anything else. Does it require certification for just the lessons?
So from a curricular perspective, we would need, if we were seeking some type of waiver, it would have to be extenuating circumstances, and then we would have to apply for said waiver with the accounting superintendent's office. I also want to be mindful that right now, one of our core challenges is actually not with music, it's actually with volunteers because the lag time for fingerprinting and background checks is taking so long. Right now, it's a three to four week backup. So if we were to find an individual not connected to public education and already in the system, it would be at least a month before we would be, we would be able to get those individuals actually in front of kids. We believe that there may be an option for us to offset some existing staff. There's a finite number of music educators that we have between both school districts, and there's a finite amount of time. What we're trying to do is we're trying to leverage the flexibility that we have, just as Todd referenced, to use one or two of those individuals a bit differently so that we can offset them enough so that fourth and fifth grade receive that benefit here in Oakland.
Has there been any checking into other districts to see if they have part-time music teachers? Someone who would be willing to, or wants to move in and do maybe the afternoon lessons or whatever for a period of time? I mean, that's always an option because those people are certified. They're already, if they needed a waiver, they've already got it. They're already vetted. It might just be an idea to look around and see, you know, what the other districts have. Maybe there's somebody that can help fill in just for the time being.
We, I put the request in last week with all the superintendents and districts in Camden County, note takers. They are all struggling with vacancies as well.
Okay. Okay. What else do I have for Committee of the Whole?
I was wondering if staff could give an update on recent changes to Halloween in school?
Halloween?
I'm sorry, could you, could you say that again?
I was hoping that the administration could give some updates on recent changes to Halloween in school.
Busy lady tonight.
It's okay. Okay, so for the, last year, we were in the midst of the pandemic. We were all on remote instruction. We had fall celebrations on Wednesday. When the kids were home, we told them to get a hot chocolate, come back to the screen. We played some games. That was that. The change really came about because what we've been finding over the years is that the Halloween quote-unquote celebration, not the educational piece, but the celebration piece of Halloween has caused some stress on a small group of our students. So rather than to continue to try to do the same thing year after year and expect a different result, you know, we're the ones seeing the tears prior to the parade. We're the ones seeing the tears after the parade. And, you know, right now, they're having a parade in town. They're having a trunk-or-treat with teachers. So we just removed the 10-minute school parade from the school day so that we wouldn't stress any of our own students out during the school day. So we used to have a 10-minute parade where it took us about an hour to get the kids into costume, which was another fiasco in the classrooms. We walked outside for 10 minutes. A couple of parents showed up and took pictures, not all parents. We came in the classrooms, we had a party, and we went home to go trick-or-treating. This year. This year, we are having a party. We're celebrating the whole week with Red Ribbon Week and some fall activities. We're having a big party on Friday at 2 o'clock at the end of the day, and we eliminated the parade and costumes piece so that we don't have to worry about excluding any of our own students who have not celebrated Halloween in the past for various reasons, whether it be they don't believe, or they don't want to. Some of our older kids get very stressed out and anxious about walking out in front of large crowds, or they don't have the ability to do so financially. So I don't think that it's a fair practice to just say, let's buy all the kids costumes because that would insinuate that a child is actually going to want to wear that specific costume and make them happy for the day as their friends possibly also make fun of them for knowing this is going on. That is not equitable, equitable practices in school anymore. So just because we've been doing something for years and years and years, that doesn't mean it's been working or that it works today in the world we live in because there are many, many changes that have taken place in our society. We've lived, we've learned, we've evolved, we're more diverse, and we have the educational background now to know that the social and emotional needs of our kids come first. And that doesn't mean just the majority of our kids, that means all of our kids. So I do not want to continue on with an event that is going to bring any tears to the school during the school day when it's really not necessary, and nobody will really miss out because we're all going to party and have a good time and celebrate Halloween after school hours with teachers and friends and family. So we're just removing the 10-minute parade from the school day, but the classroom parties will take place. And we are also going to continue to educate students about Halloween because it is part of the fall season, and it is a tradition that families celebrate. So we recognize and we educate all different traditions and holidays throughout the whole school year. We'll read books, sing songs, make some arts and crafts projects, but celebrating it in school, we're kind of just making the assumption that all believe in that same tradition when that is not really the case anymore.
So that includes no costumes for the day in school?
No costumes in school. We are doing a pajama day so that they can fall into fall with a good book during story time, or dream big about drugs, as Adam would say in his Omeisack flyer. So that entire week leading up to Halloween, we have a different theme day for Red Ribbon Week. And then on Halloween, we will still, you know, do some fun things, remind the trick or treaters to be safe, check their candy, walk with an adult, get them excited about it if they want to be excited about it. But the ones who aren't going to participate won't feel so bad sitting in a classroom alone when we go outside for the 10-minute parade and won't feel so bad about not having a costume that day. So we are just doing what's best for all students to not stress anybody out this school year.
And round numbers, just how many, what was the percent of how many children were stressed out by wearing a costume?
It's a small group, but one is too many.
I agree. I don't think it matters.
It's a small group, but one is too many because we're the ones that deal with, with the classroom tantrums or crying or parents calling. We also have another side to this where not all the parents can show up to the parade anymore. Their jobs are very demanding. So then you have a couple of criers every year as to why was my mom and your daddy not here? Why didn't I get a picture of me? It's not a very healthy event for young children when you think of it that way. But I think we've all just thought about it in a different way because we're showing up to watch something very cute and fun, and then we go home, and then the educators see the flip side of it on the inside of the school. And we see what it does to some children, and it's not okay to do to some children.
Well, I think this year also Halloween's on a Sunday, not a school day. And the town, this town in particular, always has a parade, every year without fail, on Halloween.
Yes, they do.
But if somebody really wants to parade, they can go to that.
It, it's not even just about the town. Our PTA is welcome to do whatever they want in future years to come. If they want to host an event after school hours using the school facility, that is fine. Our teachers are hosting their own trunk or treat across the street. We've always had the teachers stand outside during Halloween and hand out candy and participate with the families who celebrate that tradition. So we want to join in on the fun, and we want everybody to have fun, but that's the key word, everybody. So during the school day, when we are responsible for all students, we want everybody to have fun, not just the majority, to have fun.
Yeah, you know, no tears is a great goal.
Thank you.
That's what they should have.
We don't need any more than we already have.
Well, but, you know, if, if you have costumes and there are certain kids that are going to be upset about that, not having costumes, I would guess you're going to have some kids that are going to be upset about that. Why can't I wear my costume to school? We always wear a costume to school.
I don't think the kids are aware of this at all. It's the parents.
You're never going to be able to satisfy 100% of the kids.
I don't think the kids are really that upset about it since we haven't heard from any of them in the classroom. If you don't plan something and you plan a fall celebration and you get them all excited about that, that's what they're looking forward to. They don't know they're missing out on something unless you tell them they're missing out on something.
Can, I mean, can we foreshadow Valentine's Day?
Valentine's Day is Valentine's Day.
What's that?
Valentine's Day is Valentine's Day.
Yeah, I mean, like, but I think, I, I'm just wondering if that's going to conclude on with other holidays, which I would love, I would love to argue against this, not, not doing the Halloween, but it makes sense to me. But I think, I think there's a couple of other holidays would have to be knocked down as well, including Valentine's Day would be one of them.
Valentine's Day, we focus on kindness in school because we don't really say that they're loving each other at that point. It's inappropriate. They don't have little boyfriends and girlfriends in kindergarten through fifth grade. So we focus a lot on Kindness Week because that is our initiative is to hashtag be kind. So they still bring in their little cards and they exchange their kindness notes with their friends, and that's completely acceptable. Everybody participates.
This is another example though, Jen. Maybe a mention to the Board of Education at some point in time that this wasn't going to happen this year. And again, we, we find out about it in, by reading Facebook, by having a parent call us, by having one of our kids come home and tell us. It, it's, it's against communication. There is no communication at this point in time, and we absolutely have to change that.
Okay. I did try to communicate it the best I could with parents in my email exchanges, but I'm not used to communicating with the board. That's usually not my role, but I can definitely communicate with you if you would like me to, Bill.
I, I would like somebody to communicate with the board. I don't care who it is, but I want to know what's going on in the school, especially if we're changing something, if we're adding something, if we're deleting something, I'd like to know about it. So I can talk intelligently with the parents at some point in time. So I can talk intelligently with my fellow board.
I do believe this was in our Friday updates as well.
Well, can I ask a question? I'm just curious, leading off of that, if this is a district-wide decision across Collingswood as well, and if Collingswood has had board-level discussions about it at all?
No, they, they have not. So I want to, I want to be very mindful of folks. Both of our school districts have a history, a, a rich history of site-based leadership. All of the things that we're discussing right now are at the sole discretion of the school. So I think that it's, we are teetering down a slippery slope. So the schools made these decisions. They informed us at the, at the district just as a heads up, but there was no edict, there was no mandate, there was no expectation from the district that they either have or not, or do not celebrate in any capacity. One of the, the things that we're focused on this year is celebration of student learning and then celebration of effective teacher practice. Anything that falls outside of those two core areas is really at the discretion of the school. The thing that we ask the schools to consider is have you communicated with your school community? Are you doing this in partnership with your PTA? And what support do you need in either direction? So I know that the elementary schools got together and came to consensus about what plan that they wanted to do. All of the elementary schools in Collingswood are doing something very similar. The PTA is actually sponsoring a fall festival in Knight Park. The schools, because Halloween falls on a, a Sunday. So Collingswood is a little bit different because Collingswood by contract has to have an early release day if Halloween falls on a school day. Because it falls on a Sunday, they don't participate next year because it will fall on a Monday. It'll, it, it will look a little bit differently because it's by contract. But I, I, I think that, you know, when we put some of these things in perspective, there's been a lot of changes. I also want to be mindful and, and, and fully recognize that our, our teachers across the board are right in the thick of it. They're getting hammered. So it's not that we're trying to take anything away from children, whether, what we're trying to do is we're trying to strike the right balance to make sure that we can move, do the work forward, and everybody is receiving the benefit. But I just want to, I just want to caution us that, you know, things like, you know, birthday parties and those other kind of things, we're not doing birthday parties because the public health recommendation is, is that it increases significant risk among students. We're not having volunteers come in to help students with costumes inside the building because that increased risks, and that goes against the things that we're trying to do, which is to keep schools open and to keep everybody safe. So I'm not, I didn't, didn't have an opinion either way about Halloween. And I, I think that, I just want to be very transparent, transparent, that schools are looking at their bandwidth and capacity, and schools are making decisions about these day-to-day items. So I don't, I don't want you to think that there was anything that we were trying to hide, or anything that needed superintendent approval or needed board approval. It was, it's just the day-to-day operations of the schools, and they're making these decisions in concert with their, with their, each of the school's PTAs.
And I just, I just want to point out too, I think that sometimes we're, we're getting in a really close, like a weird, I don't even know what the vibe is, but you just mentioned it. We are two different school districts. We share a superintendent, but it's not an us is them. It's not, you know, we all try to align everything, but just because Oakland makes a decision, we can't expect ever that Collingswood is going to make the same decision. They may, but they're their own district, and we are our own district, and Ms. Bolden's in charge of our school. They have all their individual principals. And I think that's important to, whereas we all try to work together because we do have crossover and the, the send and receive later, we need to remember that it's not all the same. It's not like one big district that everybody should be doing exactly the same. The needs are different in different places. I think, I feel like lately, that's been getting missed.
I think we have to understand that if we're going to ask Ms. Bolden and Dr. McDowell to keep us informed, that this is not a chance for us to, you know, get into a big diatribe discussion over it. These are decisions that we have allowed the school to make because of their autonomy. And we have to be careful that, you know, this doesn't become a situation. But I have to agree that we need to know what's happening. Again, it's that grocery shop, and no Halloween party? Ah, you know, and unfortunately, I do as much research as I possibly can, but I don't have kids in the school. You have some, you don't have any, you know? So there's a group of us that really are not as much in the know, and we're, we'd just like to understand what's happening in Oakland that's going to affect, you know, anybody that would ask. Now, we are not supposed to be discussing large issues without having the answers, but at least we can say to someone in confidence, I'm aware of it. Here's what, you know, here's who you can talk to if you want to, and we don't look like, you know, we've just tried to find cheese in the milk section and it's not really there anymore. You know, I mean, seriously, it's, it's just, it's a matter of being aware. And I think that's, if nothing else, that's what the board needs to be. We just need to be aware of what's happening. And I know, Bill, you've been really upset about this recently, and I was thinking that perhaps you can get together and with Dr. McDowell and discuss together, the two of you, what your concerns are and what areas they are, you know? And then he can take it back to the, to Collingswood, who does a lot of our work for us. And then if we find that it's too much for them with all the changes, and we have to be mindful of COVID because it's changed everything.
Yes, I agree.
That perhaps we need to bring in someone who is just an Oakland person over in the board office who does all this for Oakland because the one thing that I get a little concerned about is every once in a while, somebody says to me, oh, you're the Oakland school. I say, no, we're not there. We're the Oakland Public School. We are our own entity, you know? And they go, oh, I just thought you were like Tatum and New. I say, no, it's not like that. You know what I mean? And we get that from people in Collingswood, and I get them from some people in Oakland too, that there's a little bit of confusion about that. So, yeah, maybe that would help build with what you think is, you know, being handled and not handled. But we, again, you know, we're in what, our third year of our contract with Collingswood, third or fourth?
Third year.
Third year. First year was great, second year we went into COVID, yep. Third year, we're in the middle of it. I mean, to think that there would be any changes in curriculum or anything up until this point is, I think the one thing the teachers asked us was, please, no changes. We can do in-school, out-of-school, whatever. So we really haven't looked at that as a serious entity. We're probably going to address that soon, but, you know, we have to be mindful of COVID and how this is, and I know from a fact from the people that I talked to in Collingswood too, that they've got their issues over there too. We just don't do it. Not making excuses, but we do have to be mindful of it. Bill, I think if we get together with Dr. McDowell, talk to him about what issues are, he can take it back to his board, or his or not his board, but the separate person people over in the board office, see what we can do about some of these things. And if not, if we need a representative in that board office that's us, maybe that's something we have to look at budgeting. You know, maybe a part-time person just to be the Oaklander, that makes sure that we all get this information, that we all know what's going on inside.
Yeah, my, my concern is just the communications.
Well, and that's what it might take because it might be so much coming, you know, from different things. It would give, it would give Jen a good place to talk to. It would give the sports people a good sense of just the changes that are coming about that are going to affect our community because we're supposed to be representative of the community, and we need to know what's going on.
Yeah, I, I don't believe we need our own person for Oakland.
Well, you know, I mean, I'm just saying that.
There are not that many issues.
Down the line, if it was.
And again, it's just, this is what's going to happen. You know, it's a, it's a three-minute blur.
It would be nice too, like if you just had a person over in, in the board office in Collingswood, that you could pick up the phone or any one of us could. There really is more so in the know of what's going on in our school district so we don't have to get passed from telephone. It doesn't always call and Beth Ann.
But isn't that supposed to be the superintendent? Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
He is our guy in that office.
I, but I'm sure that in some situations, he would say, go talk to Jen McFarland because you're talking about a curriculum issue. If you have a curriculum issue, then that's the person that you would talk to. You know, we just have to find out who's, who's handling everything. And that's why I said you got to get together, the two of you, and hash it out as to who we contact, what goes on, and what happens. Because here again, new people, you have a new staff over there. I mean, everything's in flux.
And, and I, Chris, I, I appreciate that, but I also don't want to conflate the issue. These are the issues that have been brought up, barring the, the, the music piece that was covered in committee, are culture-building issues. To my, to my understanding since February, we have not had the challenge as it relates to things like curriculum, budget, facilities, operations, and those other components. I do think that some of the softer issues which tug at the heart, that tug at the heart string, we will need to, as a district, we will elevate those to make sure that we're being as communicative about those as we have been about operations, curriculum, teaching and learning.
That's perfect. Thank you.
I'd like to point out that Bill's microphone is not turned off at all, but your microphone keeps turning off.
Bill, what are you doing?
I don't know whether it's on or not, to tell you the truth. The red light's on, so I'm assuming that it's on.
Just a.
I'm trying to talk loud enough that I don't need that thing.
Real quick point I want to make, and I, I think Jimmy alludes to the point you brought up earlier. You know, with the parade, I'm indifferent. I think it's great we're accommodating, we're having different celebrations, ways to still keep the kids engaged. But, you know, to your point, well, what about other holidays? I think it's, you know, more indicative of a bigger shift we've been seeing to make things more inclusive, you know? We're not having a Christmas celebration, it's a winter celebration. It's not, you know, Columbus Day, to use a recent one, it's Indigenous Persons' Day. So I think we just need to be aware that we could see the shift again, whether, you know, we're Valentine's, the focus is on kindness, or, you know, listen, I mean, it goes in the other direction too. Maybe if there's, you know, recognition for Pride Month, it's just, well, pride in who you are. So I think it's indicative of a greater shift that we've been seeing and we've seen it, I think, with Christmas. We're seeing it with Halloween or fall. You know, maybe Valentine's becomes kindness. I think we just need to be aware that-
Spring break, yeah.
It's going to have to work on both ends and we might be seeing these shifts in future events. So just to be aware of that.
Yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of why I mentioned it, because I, I'm a big proponent of Halloween and scary stuff in general, but, but the whole Valentine's Day, I'm going to get rid of that. So I just want to, you know, one or, one or the other, you can't have-
Now we don't.
I just want to point out that Oakland, we have to be careful with the COVID, we have to be careful with the COVID, we have to be careful with the COVID, yes, we have to be careful with the COVID, and all of the COVID, we have to be careful with the COVID. Just about now and that's all.
I just want to point out, I think it's hard for a lot of people, especially those of us who may have been through those traditions, to realize we're in it, it's not 1983. It's, you know, that these, it's, it, things have evolved in the world, even with COVID. I mean, there's additional precautions that have to be put in place for this. Whether that's the reason or not, it's not the point, but we, I know sometimes we feel nostalgic for the things that our other kids did or we did as a kid or things like that. The world's not the same. It's not the same as it was two years ago. And I think Todd is absolutely right that this is a shift that we'll see in whole to include more people in general and we just, we have to be prepared for it and understand.
And is it better for worse, it's a shift?
It is, right.
We need to be aware of that timing and that it's going to continue.
Yep. Exactly, exactly.
Figure out how we respond accordingly.
Are we going on to the next thing?
Sure.
All right. Two really quick things. One, me and Dr. McDowell kind of had a little palow back and forth on the reopening plan and about its length. It was like 20-some pages and having kids, having two jobs, having all this stuff. And I'm sitting there, it's like 10:30 and I'm on my phone and I'm going through this document and I'm like, it's the same thing it was last month. It's the same thing it was the month before. So I was like, can you please, please, please highlight the changes for us that literally don't have, you know, 20 minutes to read the 20-page document? And that happened. So I thank you for that. Thank you for putting that together and making that happen so, so we can go through and browse that really quickly.
Cheesier.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, because that was the old superintendent, like I said, he would, he would make, highlight all the changes because it would, the information needs to be out there over and over and over continuously. But for those that have read it, I mean, it's, you know, yeah, you're on page two and you're like, it's the exact same thing. So why, why bother? So, yeah, thank you for, thank you for doing that. The second thing, I don't know how big of an issue this was, but on Friday, I got a phone call about my daughter's fourth grade class being exposed to COVID. So me and my significant other discussed our plans, how we're going to do it, who's going to go pick her up, how we're going to like get through with our employers. And then 34, 30, 40 minutes later, she comes out here, finds out that it wasn't her class. It was someone else's, it was the other class. So I wasn't sure if the entire classroom got informed incorrectly or-
Yeah, a couple even did until I called them.
Yeah.
They thought we were shutting down both Board 3s. I had the old impression that they used to play together outside.
Okay.
And I was like, no, no. And then we started calling parents back and Miss Dew as she walked away.
Yep.
So we were only closing down the one class, not the two because they did not come in contact with each other.
Yep.
So by the time we were trying to make it down the list to correct that your wife showed up, I was able to explain that to her at the time.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was, that, that there was a policy in place that that's not going to happen again because that could be very, you know, if, if we didn't have lenient jobs and, you know, like, yeah.
We did try to call back immediately to try to make it, but you might have been down the list.
Yeah.
Then we had parents coming in and the secretary was trying to get them out the door and call back parents. It got a little messy, but I did make it clear that at that time, our cohorts mixing.
Okay.
So now the nurse, you know, and the, and the secretary are on that thing because she just heard Board 3, all the Board 3 are outside.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, I just was wondering if that's what happened to other colleagues or the cohort of colleagues?
Yeah. The first one for a one, right? Yeah. All right, that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I've got a question on committees from, from my side. There, there's some concern about our committees that's been expressed. With a nine-member board, we can't have more than four people on a committee or it becomes a public meeting. So we have to stay away from that. And that includes the ex officio members that, that might be on a committee. So we're locked into that.
Were we able to verify that? Because when I looked online, the Roberts rules made it sound different. That's why I wasn't sure.
Well, everything I read said that and our attorney said that.
Okay, no, that's why I was asking.
So I'm inclined to believe that.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah. So the, there, really the committee setup that we have now, if we're concerned, and some people were concerned about the time, you know, I didn't have enough time to go over everything. Well, you don't need that time. The committee meeting, the first one starts at 5:30. It goes until you're done. If that's 6:15, the next committee doesn't start until 6:15. Theoretically, they're going to show up at 5:45, but if something's going on, they're going to get pushed back and the committee after that is going to get pushed back. Not the best situation, but you shouldn't feel that I have to get everything done in three minutes or I'm going to have to give it up.
My, my concern about the time had nothing to do with that. My concern about the time was the fact that the times were split and that the meetings were split in half. It doesn't matter to me whether I'm there a half an hour or 45 minutes, if that's what it takes. My concern was we went from having a meeting between 5:30 to 6:00 that incorporated both curriculum and personnel to, you have two people who are going to talk about curriculum, two people who are going to talk about personnel, you still have to wait to hear everything about it. It made more sense to me, the way we did it before, where we had four people and we did have people rotating before and it did work. And I'm happy to be that person if that's necessary because others don't want to. But that was my concern. I didn't want you to misunderstand that I was saying that it was about, I don't want to spend this much time. It wasn't that-
Oh, yeah, no, that wasn't my thought.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I didn't expect that. No, 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 no.
I have, I have an idea. Can I share my idea?
Go.
Okay. So I've been looking at the agendas a lot and I feel like the bulk of the discussion before board meetings is in the Facilities, Finance and Shared Services Committee. It seems like their agenda is always this big and then we got like two little things down here in Personnel and two little things down here in Curriculum, which generally do not require a lot of discussion. And I agree that Personnel needs to be in its own, not its own committee, but in a committee. You had mentioned earlier this year, moving to a committee of a whole for all the committees and, and we all disagreed with you and said, sorry, sorry, Bill, respectfully, yes, that, that it is important to have those preliminary discussions, particularly with the budget stuff. There's a lot of back and forth and, and I think with Facilities and Shared Services as well and Personnel. I don't know that we need that, a curriculum as a separate committee. And I'm wondering if curriculum could be more of a committee of a whole discussion and then maybe split Finance, Facility, Shared Services and Personnel separately. So maybe it's Finance and Shared Services over here and Facilities and Personnel over here or some different combination. And I can see you disagreeing, I'm just throwing this out here.
No, I'm confused. I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
So the, so you want to have the later one split up?
Yes.
Not have a curriculum one, but have a Personnel one?
Correct. No, no, no. I'm saying do you split the, the Finance, Facility, Shared Services. They're all together right now.
Right, right.
And it's a lot for them to talk about.
Yes, 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 yes.
So I'm saying instead of having those three together, maybe pull out Facilities and put that with Personnel, maybe Curriculum when there's things like the calendar that maybe need preliminary discussion.
I don't think we should remove anything. If you want to split differently, I can understand that to, to split up the timing and things. But I don't think removing one because we have only a few things here and there is valuable.
No, and I'm not doing it more for that reason. It's more that I feel like maybe Curriculum needs a bigger discussion. I feel like we don't talk a lot about it.
But we don't make the curriculum.
No, but we approve the curriculum.
Right, right, right. But we're having to, but I mean, I don't know.
No, and I, and I, I'm going back to what Bill said earlier, where there's a lot, I'm sorry.
Where it might be helpful if the board was more informed about stuff. And I'm not saying that it's a decision. I'm just saying it's more of a, hey, this is what's going on.
I agree.
So maybe having, we used to do like program updates or Ms. Bolden would do like program updates and I feel like we haven't had one of those in a while and I'd love to get back to it. That's obviously not a committee discussion. What I'm saying is in the Curriculum Committee itself, we talk about the calendar and this past week, we talked about music because that was an issue, but generally, there's not much to talk about there, right?
In the past, I never felt that we were missing something when it was Curriculum and Personnel together. I felt like we had a half an hour discussion about those things, whatever they were for that month. Sometimes they might be more curriculum, sometimes they might be more Personnel and it fit. That was just my opinion. I didn't see that there was a problem and then all of a sudden, it was changed without anybody deciding it other than the president and I had a problem with that too. Well, just because it's allowed doesn't mean it's the right thing.
Yeah, just bear in mind that the, the rules and regulations of the Oakland Board of Education give the president the sole right to-
I just said, I, I understand that you have the right to do it and I didn't, you know, say anything at the time because you have the right to do it, but just because you have the right to do it, doesn't mean it was the right decision. In my opinion.
I don't make many right decisions, I know.
It's just my opinion. I'm just, this is how I feel. I'm going to do whatever, you tell me to show up at 5:30 for something, I'm going to show up at 5:30 for something. Tell me to show up at 6:00 for a different committee, I'm going to show up at 6:00. I'm going to do whatever I do because I'm committed to doing something. I'm just expressing that. I think it worked before well and I think that there's been a lot of flux and this and that and I don't feel like it's working now.
Just a suggestion and I don't know if this is what we're looking for or not, so just throwing it out there. If it's an issue of kind of the classic case where the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, this committee isn't really aware of what this committee's involved in, could it be something, and I say it's simple, could it be something as simple as the one committee chair reaches out to the other committee chair via email, hey, here are the highlights from our committee meeting. The other committee chair says, hey, here are the highlights from ours. And then as committee chairs, they can shoot an email out to their respective committees with some like, hey, bulleted points, you know, here's the update from the committee we weren't in. Obviously, we have to be aware of just emailing the committee so it's not out to the whole board, but I mean, I don't know if that solves what we're looking to solve, if that's a decent suggestion or one that's a waste of time, but-
For me personally, that's not a concern. I'm more thinking about a balance of responsibilities, right? I feel like one committee, the Finance and Facilities and Shared Services, they have a lot of stuff they have to get through, right? So they have four people talking about a lot of stuff. And then you have the four other people on the other two committees that don't have that much that they need to talk about before a committee meeting or before the full board meeting. That, I guess that's what I'm saying.
If I can defend that, I said on, I said on Finance because there was absentees on this last week's committee meeting and Therese hated that I was on there. I'm just kidding. But I, I was like, this is great, I'm going to, I'm going to sit in on the Personnel meeting, which was like seven minutes like usual. And then there was some missing people and I think Bill asked me if I could stay on and I was like, that's fine. So I'm sitting there and sitting there and sitting there and I'm like, it's 7:45 and my kids haven't eaten yet. So I'm in there, in the, in the committee meeting, cooking in the kitchen, trying to listen to it and I was like, I got to go. So, yeah, I mean, our seven-minute Personnel meeting and their hour and 20-minute Finance meeting is not fair and-
I agree with that completely.
Yeah.
I don't have an objection to splitting things up. I just think that the current way where you have two people for one, two people for another and then all this other thing, doesn't work.
I agree. It should be two, two committees.
I have an idea. And it's, I have, I have an idea.
I need a volunteer, before you get that, I want a volunteer. If we're going to split it to two committees, that means we can have eight people. We have nine board members.
Wait, but Bill-
Who's going to volunteer not to be on the board?
Chris has an idea. I have an idea, I have an idea about this. To go back to two committees, okay? We have Personnel and Curriculum and we have the Finance. In order for Bill to be there, I will be the outperson on my committee. Someone's not going to make it, I won't be there. Over on the Finance and the Facilities, you can split that into two if you want or three and two or however you want to do it to make your time and, you want, somebody doing just Finances for two and three with yourself, you can do whatever you want on your side and that will give you the balance. That way we have two committees, we have to go back to the half an hours and we should be able to get it done because we were able to do it before.
We did it for years.
We did it for years. The only problem with putting Bill in there is there's too many of us, right? So like I said, this way, and we are better as a group, a larger group, because we discuss more as a group. And that, that two people, I mean, like it's, it's, it's really not functional. It isn't. I mean, it just isn't. It's a mess. We can still do it online. We have the, the-
Oh, no, he stopped that.
No, 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 no. Or we're going to do it in person? Okay, that's right. Sorry.
Don't open that.
Sorry, sorry. Forgive me. Personal, Personnel and Curriculum, I'll be the, you know, the revolving door for that. And then you can go over here to your Finance and your Facilities. You can break that into how many committees you want or not, or just have one person. If you don't have a lot on your agenda that month, you just say to somebody, okay, I'm going to designate you as the person out. I'll send you an email about what went on. It should solve the problem.
What we did before was we had a month, everybody was assigned a month that they didn't go and the other person went in and it worked.
Yeah, it worked.
It worked for years.
Now, I'll tell you what, that didn't work. We, we did that for a while, yes. The rotating person, there's no continuity. You know, you miss this month's meeting, you come to the next month's meeting, you have no idea what went on here.
But Bill, there would be continuity because I would be the only person who's going to be the odd man out and I am fluid enough to follow what's going on or get to you or get to, you know, whoever the person is and ask the questions. I mean, I'm more than willing on my side. And you wouldn't have that on your Finance and Facilities because you could break that up into whatever, you know, size groups you want.
If I can just interject for a second, as Chair of that committee, I, I have, I think it's a good idea in theory, but I'm having a hard time as I go through the agendas that for the past four years I've been part of, how we would really split it because so many things do affect the budget. Shared Services and Facility usage very much affect the budget.
Right.
But I also think that as a Chair, I think there is a responsibility of that board member to communicate fully with all members, present or not, before and after each meeting so that everybody's on the same page, every voice is heard. I personally am ready and willing to take on that and it's something that I've tried to do and foster. I did not hate that Jimmy was there. I hated Zoom. I hated Zoom because in the, I mean, we just saw it right now. You were speaking, I jumped a tiny bit on you, a little bit. I hope I wasn't disrespectful. You can't do that in Zoom. So this was me on Zoom. Uh-uh.
Yeah.
And I didn't talk for 15 minutes.
Yeah.
So I very much support going back to in-person for committee meetings. I know it's not ideal for the staff. And I also want to acknowledge that the administrative staff, Dr. McDowell, Beth Ann, everybody's, all of the teachers and administrators are stretched to their limits and all of us as to communicate fully with all members, present or not, before and after each meeting, so that everybody's on the same page, every voice is heard. I personally am ready and willing to take on that, and it's something that I've tried to do and foster. I did not hate that Jimmy was there. I hated Zoom. I hated Zoom, because in the, I mean, we just saw it right now. You were speaking, I jumped a tiny bit on you, a little bit. I hope I wasn't disrespectful. You can't do that in Zoom. So this was me on Zoom. And I didn't talk for 15 minutes. So I very much support going back to in-person for committee meetings. I know it's not ideal for the staff. And I also wanna acknowledge that the administrative staff, Dr. McDowell, Beth Anne, everybody's, all of the teachers and administrators are stretched to their limits, and all of us as individuals, we're all, this is the highest tension meeting we've had in years, you know? Because everybody's at their limit. But I do think that we could keep that structure. I think we could go back to, maybe we should vote on it, but I think we could go back to a rotating, you know, a month off, because it almost naturally happens anyway, with people having conflicts.
Yeah, that's my thought.
And I would, I would like to try that, so.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the two committees. Bill will be there, we'll rotate people in and out. Like I said, if nobody's gonna be absent, I'll be the, you know, the volunteer in my group, it doesn't matter to me, because I have the time to reach out to all the different people, and I know that you'll reach out to me, and so will Denise, and, you know, anybody else that needs to, we'll reach out, and I'll know what's going on. So yeah, I mean, I think we really need those four people together. And this might stop some of this confusion with, nobody knows what's going on, what's happening, because, I mean, you know, there could be 10-minute meetings, and that, that doesn't give us the time to get things out there, and then we don't wind up having hour-and-a-half board meetings where we're in the committee of the whole.
Make one more suggestion.
Just, just a note, you mentioned the committee of the whole. That would mean that you don't have committee meetings.
No, and I understand that. And I only meant that for curriculum only, because I feel like that is just the one area that probably doesn't need preliminary discussion. That was why I suggested that. I feel like, obviously, you can't do that with, with the budget stuff, you can't do that with personnel stuff. A lot of facility stuff there's back and forth on. I feel like curriculum is one where there's, it could be a larger discussion, and I feel like that, like the calendar issues, for example. We usually talk about them in committee, and then we usually bring it to the full board anyway. So why don't we just skip the first discussion and then have the larger discussion? Then that's why I meant that anyway.
But isn't that the point of the committee, I mean, maybe I'm missing it, but isn't that the point of the committee meetings is to do that and then bring it to the meeting so that we're not spending six hours talking about the same stuff?
Could be, yeah, yeah.
Yes. I'll tell you what, a couple of things. Number one, committee meetings for the balance of this calendar year will be in-person, not Zoom. So I make one person happy anyway. The other part is the committees, the makeup of the committees will not change this calendar year. We'll continue with the setup that we have right now until the end of the calendar year. And then we'll have to rethink that at the reorganization meeting. If you have really good ideas, please drop me a note, let me know. Nothing's set in concrete at this point in time. We went with a designated committee person for at least four years, because I was the odd person out for three of those four years. So I didn't go to any committee meetings unless somebody happened to be absent, and if there, you'd be surprised how few times there really is somebody absent from, from one of the meetings, because I didn't make many meetings at all. So either they, everyone was making it, or nobody bothered to tell me that they weren't gonna be there so that I could be there. So that doesn't work either. I've, I've done a lot of this, guys, I really have. Some work, some doesn't, but we, we keep trying. So as I say, for the, for the balance of this year, which is two more months, we're gonna keep everything the way it is right now. At that point in January, we can, we can worry about changing everything at that point to see how it goes from there. Okay?
Sounds good to me.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I said that sounds good to me. I wanna point out that this is like the largest crowd we've seen, and they might wanna have something to say to.
I'm sure, I'm sure they all agree with me, right? Okay, does anybody have anything else for the committee of the whole?
So I'll just add real fast that this policy that I asked for us to discuss, we can talk about this in November. It's not pressing. It was just something that I actually wanted to talk about in committee meeting, and then we ran out of time because we were on Zoom, and we were talking about music.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we, we don't have time. There's not a time limit on the committee meeting.
Right. And I think, I needed a reminder. You know, I feel nervous knowing that there's people waiting, and they don't know why they're waiting. It's, that's a personal issue for me, I'll have to get over it.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to come out of committee of the whole? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, okay, we're back on the, the agenda. Item four, presentations. Mrs. Bolden, you're back on again.
Hi, the easiest report of the night. So this is just the school safety data report for Report Period Two, which ran from January 2nd, 2021, to June 17th of 2021. During that time, I did not have to report any HSA investigations or any incidents leading to the removal of students. For our trainings, we completed our suicide prevention GCN tutorial. We also trained staff on our new HAWK character education program. And then for our programs, we implemented the HAWK character education program. We had Random Acts of Kindness Week, World SEL Day, and then we also implemented the SEL curriculum for January through June. And that is a wrap on the SSDS report. Any questions?
Okay, we're moving now. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
No district test report. We go to the important dates, which are listed there for your reading enjoyment.
Can I ask a quick question on the test report? Could you just explain what the acronyms are there? DLM, or the testing?
DLM are Dynamic Learning Maps. It's an alter, an alternative assessment for special education students. And an access is for English language learners.
Okay, the dates are there for, for your review. Okay, we go to section six, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
No, moved. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions?
I just wanna make a note that I did give an update on PTA at the last meeting, it's just not in the minutes. That's all.
Okay, we'll...
It will be presented, but it was presented. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll make that change.
There's one more thing, there's a correction to under, I'm sorry, the public comment. It just had a typo in the 1619 project, it had a dash, and that's a year, so I just wanted, if that could be corrected as well. That's all.
I missed that.
Thank you.
Okay, with those corrections made, any other questions, corrections? One, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. I hesitate to do this, but we'll now go to the public comments section. So we'll ask you to stand, give us your name and address, try and keep your comments to five minutes or less, and you can discuss agenda items. At this point, because of the time that we've taken, I'll, I'll go to also non-agenda items. We'll start the second public comment section in the past, but we'll take comments now at this point.
My name is Adam Scher, 18 West Beachwood. I have two daughters. They went here K through nine and K through eight, and I always appreciated all the programs that were here. My daughter in the fourth grade came down to the cafetorium, and the junior high paraded out with all their instruments, and she decided right there that she wanted to play the saxophone, just like Shawna Lamina, who was the mayor's daughter, or the mayor at the time, the daughter, because she was cool when she played field hockey and she played the saxophone. And my daughter now at University of Pennsylvania is on the club field hockey team and plays the saxophone in the marching band. The drum major at the Collingswood Marching Band is an Oakland grad, Corbin Roth. Sat next to him for many years on the stage in the cafetorium. We play the tuba together. I just wanna reiterate how important music education is to the members of this community, and I appreciate what I heard today, which is not what I heard before, so I appreciate and heard all the work that you are doing, and encourage you to keep that work up, because it's a proven fact that music education also helps the cognitive development of our children. And it's not just, it's not just a throwaway art thing. It's really important. I remember a couple of years ago, STEAM Day went to, STEM Day went to STEAM Day, so let's not lose the arts. So I appreciate all the work you're doing, and encourage you to continue to do that work to make sure that our kids can get their instrumental lessons. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Adam. Anyone else?
My name's Karen Williams. I live at 124 East Federalwood Avenue. My son is Ethan, he's in the fifth grade, and he plays the drums, so it was really important for me to come here tonight. And I was just curious as to, like, doesn't the middle school have their own music teacher? Like, when did Mrs. Ludwig Stark coming, going to the middle school, is that, was that always in her contract, or was there, like, was there a void or something at the middle school, and they had to pull? And I was kinda curious, if that happened again with a different subject, would they pull another teacher from our school, like, say, a Spanish teacher? I mean, is that, is that something that would happen? I'll sit down.
That, that would not, not be the case. The health, that would be, would be a little bit difficult. I mean, that there would be, that would have to be tied by, that would have to be a lot of, 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 shouldn't we be teaching our kids tolerance and acceptance of different cultures and ideas? Seems unfair to remove something you're uncomfortable with. Most parents in this room have a memory made from the elementary school celebrations. I bet even all of you in front of me on the board have some too. Why deprive these children of an opportunity to make those long-lasting memories? We are a great community and school, and our school should be a reflection of that. If there are any issues with costumes, costumes, we can start a costume drive. Parents can volunteer their time to help out the kids with face paint, makeup. This doesn't need to be used as an opportunity to be divisive and take away something away. Instead, it can be an opportunity to bring us together as a community, as neighbors, as friends. I hope you all understand, this is bigger than the Halloween parade. This is about taking something away and what's gonna be the next item. We talk about Valentine's Day and calling it Friendship Day. Don't we all need a little more love? Don't we need to care for each other a little bit better? That's all I'm asking for. The kids love this thing. And I understand there is a couple that may have some issues. Let's help them. Let's bring everybody up. Instead of bringing the majority down to this level, let's bring everybody up here. Thank you.
Just a note that your question's on the cafeteria, that kids don't wear masks when they're eating in the cafeteria.
Yes, sir. They don't wear masks when they're eating in the cafeteria, but you can only speak to students that are like they're 45, and if you're turned, you can speak to another student. I can have my daughter come back up and tell you about her experience there, where a teacher comes within two feet of her, pulls her mask down, and tells her to stop talking.
Okay, I, I don't know anything about the talking to your friends.
They're all getting a little bit apart, because they're only getting a little bit apart.
Okay. Have the kids behind them at the next table.
I would love to know if anybody's been to the one series, because we are supposed to, we've been having to talk to people for work all year, so when you come up to two kids laughing, and we have to, you know, help them all the time. Sorry. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Mrs. Patrick?
Please call my daughter a liar.
Mrs. Patrick? Mrs. Patrick? Can I ask you to get together with Mrs. Bolden and discuss that? Part of the problem is, the kids, while they're eating, as I said, they're unmasked, so the, the health guidelines that were given are to keep them separated, so by them being unmasked, turning around, they're violating the guidelines that we're trying to use to keep the school open.
My point is, the third is, they want to talk to their friends, because we need to find a place in the house outside, and if the, if there's a, 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 if there's[1618.41] to be completely new to us, especially given the current COVID situation. However, there have been a few things that simply escape us. Our son is a food allergy child. While he is certainly not the first allergy child in your school system, as previously stated, this is all new to us as his parents. This was an instant, there was an instance on the first day of school where my child had a potential allergy exposure. His teacher took immediate action. I applaud her for her reactive thinking. While in the nurse's office, I was informed that he had no emergency anaphylaxis plan on file, so she would not have been able to administer his EpiPen that we provided if needed. It was also brought to my attention that his teacher would not be able to administer his EpiPen in the event of a severe reaction because she is not certified. This baffled me. I took the conversation one step further through Ms. Bolden that day to ask why I was not provided with the important documents that could ultimately save my son's life. I was met with resistance and further confusion. She could not tell me why I did not receive the proper paperwork, and that I must not have checked off that he was, that he had a severe food allergy, which I most certainly did. I was also informed that the staff cannot be forced to take the certification. The problem is, something fell through the cracks within your system, and it could have been a life-ending mistake. I cannot believe that my son's life-saving medication cannot be in the same room as him. The EpiPen and anaphylaxis certification is a $35 course and can mean the difference between life and death. I, as a parent, feel as though I have the right to know in the event that the nurse is unavailable, who is available and ready to administer his medication, and where they are in relation to his classroom within the building because seconds matter. He is a toddler and may not understand what is happening. We put our trust into the school administration and teachers to keep our child healthy and safe. If we were to judge based off our initial experience, we are not exactly the most confident in leaving our son day-to-day. The lack of concern from the upper administration is disheartening. I am fearful nearly every day because I don't know the school's procedures and have not been given the opportunity to know exactly what will be done in the event of emergency. My son has a special need, it needs to be treated as such. I implore you to have clear and open communication with parents so things like this don't happen again. I urge you to fix the flaw within your system that did not red-flag my son's allergies so the proper paperwork and conversations were in place before the first day of school. I ask that you educate your staff beyond the nurse and immediate response team about allergies and reactions, because it's not always a typical "I can't breathe." And lastly, I hope that you can make exceptions to the rules and allow children's life-saving medications to be immediately on hand for the teacher or aide to administer. At the very least, it's peace of mind knowing that his medication is within reach and not outside the classroom. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Fatigan, did you say that his EpiPen was in the nurse's office?
I, prior to the first day of school, because I did not know whether or not there were EpiPens in the school or not, I had his allergist write a prescription specifically for him to be given. I was not aware that there had to be an emergency anaphylaxis plan on file. It was not given to me prior to the first day of school. First day of school, it was turned in to the nurse, but the nurse did inform me that because this plan was not on file, she would not have been able to administer the EpiPen that I provided, but there was EpiPen in the school. But once again, that was not made aware to me prior. Like I said, we're first-time school parents, so this is all new to us. And we feel that, I understand with COVID, but prior to the opening of school, things like this, a red flag should have been raised, and that we feel that we should have been included with his teacher and administration to help ease our minds and let us know what the proper protocols and procedures were. And that's something that just fell flat.
Okay, and I can't address that, but there are medical procedures that
Yeah, I'm fully aware of that.
Will require a nurse to administer medications, and there has to be instructions for that nurse to administer that medication.
That I am fully aware of.
Okay.
But with him only being in his classroom, it's a little concerning to me that his, I would assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, I would assume that an anaphylaxis course would go hand-in-hand with a first aid force. So, to be told that the staff, you know, they can't, the staff can't be forced to take that certification.
That's true. The problem is, most of the staff in those situations are concerned about liability. Even they may be certified.
Versus potentially having a child who dies?
I'm not quarreling with that point, I don't disagree with you. But staff members are concerned that if they administer a medication, even if they're certified, and something happens to the child as a result of that administration of the medicine, that they'll be held liable. That's a problem, and I'm sure you can understand that.
I can understand the ramifications of something like that. But what I'm saying as well is, something fell through the cracks, like I stated, that I wasn't not provided with the proper paperwork. I also think it's not, it's, I feel personally it's a safety issue to my son that he's not in the, like, we don't even know who is certified elsewhere in the building. And I feel that as a parent, I have a right to know that, especially when I have a kid who doesn't fully grasp the severity of his allergies, and there's, they maintain a peanut-free classroom, but things sometimes, you know, find their way in. And I just would feel more comfortable, as a parent, leaving my child within the care of the school for six-plus hours a day, having, you know, the backup and assuring me that he's going to be safe, he's nothing to worry about.
Okay, we'll look into the backup, we'll also look into adding a segment in the typical first-aid training to see what can be done along those lines.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
So, Ms. Fatigan, I'm going to have, the school is going to follow up with you this week to make sure that there is a formal backup plan, just so that we cross all of our bases.
So, make sure we have a formal backup plan for every student that's in her child's position, correct?
Please, you have a plan.
All right. Do you have teachers that are certified that are willing to give that EpiPen?
Yes, we have teachers that are trained to give the EpiPen. I'm actually trying to give the EpiPen to our students, obviously.
Yeah, I guess a sec.
We have all the students in the building, all the staffs who train on where they are, where the children are.
Do you know if the teachers are willing to give it?
We have a list of teachers that have the training to give it, so they have to follow it. But, sorry, I understand that you also have, cannot force a parent or a teacher to take the certification. However, with the certification, if teachers, in addition to power the internet plan, if teachers decide to look for an anaphylaxis, it presents itself very differently in terms of anaphylaxis. So, while they may not be comfortable with administering an EpiPen, I would be more than happy to pay for my child, teachers, and these moving forward if they want to take this course, so that at least they are educated in what to look out for and moving forward.
Yeah, that's not the problem, and we can't address that. Money is not the problem, we don't want you to pay for that.
I'm simply, you know, trying to, you know, roll down a barrier in that way.
If I could just address something to that point quickly. So, I teach over in Collins with middle school. Every year it's offered, I actually volunteer to be a delegate to administer an EpiPen. Comes into my classroom at some point, it may not. In terms of at least making staff aware, I don't know if that's something we could include in GCN training. That would be a very easy fix. There are certain trainings that staff are required to take at the beginning of the year on anti-bullying, you know, sexual harassment, bloodborne pathogens. There's a list of required trainings that we go through. I can't remember if epinephrine and distribution of that is specifically in there, but I think that's something worth looking into. That way, at least, every staff member would have, even if they're not a delegate to administer it, they would be aware of the warning signs if they see a student having that attack, and then we can contact the nurse or a delegate to attend to that student.
And, 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 and,[1312.12]
Okay, so looking at the total enrollment report, we're looking at a total of 256 students pre-K through five and 217 students grades six through 12, for a total of 473 Oakland students. And that report is attached under section 8.01. We also have a school safety drill report for the month of September that's also attached. No suspensions, no reports of bullying. And then the child study team report 8.05 is also attached for the board's review. And 8.06 are policies presented for first reading. Board committees revised. Number 2425, emergency virtual or remote instructional program, new. 5751, sexual harassment of students, revised. And then 7510, use of school facilities, revised based on last month's committee of the whole discussion.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McDowell. And we go to the liaison reports. Denise, PTA, please.
The PTA met here in the library on October 5th. There were some events in September, including Ice Cream Social. They're also working on the Week of Respect and Red Ribbon Week coming up with OMACAC. Picture Day is this Thursday. I should say participation in the Collingswood Holiday Parade on Saturday, November 27th. And they are working on a holiday shop in December and also a holiday event with Santa in December as well. And will be putting something out soon about the Reflections Art Contest. And that's it. The next meeting is the first Tuesday in November, and I forgot the date. I'm sorry. November 2nd, thank you. Even though it's Election Day, yes. Vote early.
But not often. Okay, anyone have questions on anything? Okay, OMACAC, Therese.
So OMACAC met on Zoom on September 27th. They went over their finances from their DEDR grant. As reported previously, they fully funded the DARE program. They reported that our gym nights were approved and the first one is going to be on October 22nd, Friday. Week of Respect was coming up and that was the week of October 4th. And it went really well. Red Ribbon Week, as reported in the PTA report, is the week of October 25th. OMACAC co-sponsored, is co-sponsoring a Hana Hayride in Collingswood at Knight Park on the 23rd of October. Also working on, obviously, the scholarships that they usually do. The over 30 basketball league started and they had 13 people for their first two nights. Maybe they're meeting tonight? I forget. And it was discussed, the group discussed the color run, which has been done in years past, and decided this year to postpone it and to look to next year when it can be aligned with the town picnic, which was also postponed. And then the next meeting will be in person in the courthouse on October 25th at 7:30. That's it.
I'm sorry, it'll be in person where?
In person in the Oakland courthouse. Courtroom. Sorry, I wrote down the wrong word.
Okay. The, their next meeting. Okay. He's going to have to listen to this whole thing so that he gets all of his notary too. Okay, Collingswood. Collingswood meeting on 9/27. Is, in the committee of the whole there, they had an update on the COVID protocols. The student reps were sworn in at Collingswood. Anna Scher is the Oakland representative on the Collingswood board. They had a pop-up vaccine clinic on 10-1. They had a blood drive on 10-12. They approved the purchase orders and the warrants that were attached. The Ostrom family in Collingswood had donated a cello to the middle school music department, which was gladly accepted. High school field trips were approved, including an overmate trip to the United Nations. Senior privilege was approved for an Oakland student to finish up at Collingswood. He's a senior and his family has moved, but he will continue at Collingswood. The high school play was approved for an outdoor performance, a Midsummer's Night and Midsummer Night's Dream. There were a number of resignations and appointments that our routine were approved. The great number of policies were approved on the second reading. They're the same ones that Oakland approved last month as well. And public comment, there were two parents that commented on COVID regulations and that was about it. So are there any questions on anything? No? Okay, we'll go to Therese. You're back on for the Education Foundation.
So the Oakland Education Foundation members of the group met in person on September 28th, outdoors and distanced. Biggest things that were discussed were recruitment of new members, including a secretary on the board. And the Gertrude Hawk fundraiser went out that week and it is until November 8th. And we don't have another meeting set yet, but we'll be soon. That's it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Okay, moving right along, we go to Beth Ann's report. You're up, Beth Ann.
So all of the questions related to finance will need to be paused. I will stay in my lane in terms of that area. Section 10.01, all of your budget transfers are there. They have all been checked and reconciled, making sure that they do not exceed the thresholds. 10.02 is the board secretary and treasurer of school funds reports, looking at your cash flow, your financial backups, and then the board report that outlines your cash balances, your cash receipts, your cash dispersments, and then your ending cash balances that have also been reconciled. And 10.03 are all of your purchase orders for October. And 10.04 are all of your warrants for October. And they are all attached in section 10.
Okay, thanks, Brett. Okay. Section 11, finance facilities and shared services.
11.01 is the move in the recommendation to approve the transfers that were just reported by Dr. McDowell. 11.02 is the accepting the board secretary's certification of no over expenditures, as just reported. 11.03 is the board certification of no over expenditures. 11.04 is the approval of the secretary and treasurer's reports, as reported by Dr. McDowell. 11.05 are approval of the purchase orders from section 10. 11.06, approval of the warrants from section 10. 11.07 is a recommendation to approve a contract with Virtual Health for providing occupational and employee health services such as needed, on an as-needed basis. 11.08 is approval of our eligibility of funding from the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. 11.09 is the approval of the 21, 2021, 2022 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. 11.10 is approving the revised purchasing manual for Oakland School. 11.11 is recommendation to approve W.J. Gross's proposal for the Emergency Generator Replacement Project. 11.12 is a recommendation to approve Oakland-Collingswood Travel Basketball for Use of the Gym for Practices and Games for the Spring Season, February 1st, 2021, I think they should say, to May 1st, 20... Oh, I'm sorry, no, you're right. It's been a long meeting. February 1st, 2022 to May 1st, on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. 11.13 is a recommendation to approve the use of the gym by the Oakland Color Guard from December 6th, 2021, through January 31st, 2022, on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. And so we are looking for approval, items 11.01 through 11.13.
I have questions about 1110, the purchasing manual. Basically, before I retired, I did have a warrant from the federal government to do purchases. And one of the items, it says if you do it with federal government, you have to stay below the micropurchase level of $3,000. I thought the micropurchase level was high now. I thought it was closer to $10,000. I tried going back and forth a couple of times with contracting specialists during the meeting. I didn't get an answer yet. Two other parts. One is for the purchase requisition going in, it gets signed off by the administrator supervisor. It also says that after the goods are received, the administrator supervisor signs that it's received. Now, when I was working, that would be a, you wouldn't be able to do that because you can't have this, you can't, that separation of function. Well, one person can't order the stuff and sign for it. It has to be separated. They did that to eliminate fraud. The other thing, which is step nine, it says responsible is superintendent. Superintendent reviews and determines the educational value. That's done after the material's been received. It should not be done before it's ordered.
So these all sound like important questions for Mrs. Coleman. So I guess, and thank you for raising them and apologies that we didn't discuss them at committee.
Yeah, it's just because I used to do this sort of thing and a lot of this stuff really got drummed into my head.
So in her absence, Mr. Stotts, do you think we should table this?
No.
No.
No, I would approve them because I'm 99.9% certain that the requirements that are listed are correct. And when the outside changes or not, we'll fix it next month when Mrs. Coleman comes back. Bob should be able to address this right off the top of her head. Yeah, we're dealing with education now, so you've got to remember. It doesn't necessarily make sense. Well, that's true. It's probably the same thing.
I just wanted to bring that up.
I'm assuming this document's the same as it has been, except for the two highlighted areas that were, that were changed, so.
Doesn't mean that it's...
Oh, I, oh, yeah, but, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we, do we have a motion to approve items 11.01 through 11.13?
So moved.
And seconded. On a roll call, please.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
I'm going to get this right before the end of the night.
I don't know, it's almost over.
Yes.
Yes.
Just yet.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
And Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, section 12, Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Butzko.
12.01. Virtual or remote instructional plan for 2021, 2022. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to approve item 12.01 and 12.02?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions on either of those items? On a roll call.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Butzko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes. Okay, section 13 is personnel, Rich, you're on.
Good evening. We're looking for approval, item 13.01, which is approval of intermittent NJFLA leave of absence. 13.02 is approval of staff tuition reimbursement. 12.03 is the resolution for remote and virtual learning plan. 13.4 is approval for substitutes and tutors for the upcoming school year. 13.05 is approval of travel expense. And that is all for personnel, looking for approval for items 13.01 through 13.05.
Okay, so a motion? Please?
So moved, second.
And a second?
Second.
Perfect. Okay, all right, any questions on this? I have just one, one question, which doesn't affect the approval. The NJFLA leave on an intermittent basis, what kind of problems does that give you in trying to staff the classroom? The family leave motion is for an intermittent family leave.
It's a 12 weeks, I believe.
Does that give you staffing the classroom? There's nothing we can do about it anyway, so.
It's not consecutive 12 weeks? Okay, cool, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a move, a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? On a roll call.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Butzko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan? Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, section 14, Dr. McDowell, you're back on again.
Section 14.01 are policies for a second read. 0110 for identification. And a mandated policy of 16.48, excuse me, 1648.13, school employee vaccination requirement. 14.02, policies to be abolished. 143, student representative to the board. 5820, student government. And 5860, safety patrol. 14.03 will be standing orders governing the treatment in case of an emergency. These are standing orders that relate to directives that are being issued by the school physician. Things that deal with everything emergent. For example, no child in an emergency situation shall be left alone, is an example. Indicating accident reports need to be filled out in the event of a situation. And then provide specific directives indicating the calling for an ambulance in the midst of an emergency. And then also things like poison control and other safety issues. And also the prescription of medicine and treatment of students and school staff. And that is attached. 14.04 is the 21, 22 Nursing Services Plan that is attached with the Emergency Response Plan, as well as the Medical Emergency Response Team for the school. 14.05 is the Memorandum of Agreement with our law enforcement partners. And 14.06 and 07, none to report at this time. We are seeking approval for 14.01 through 05.
Okay, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
I have a question.
How about a second first?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded now. Question, go ahead.
It's late, I'm sorry. When policies go in, like this emergency, standing orders or whatever, are the teachers' part, are they introduced to this? Do they know, like, that no one's, no child's supposed to be, or no adult's supposed to be left unattended? Are all these policies, are they passed out to the teachers? Do they know? Or are they just stuffed away in a binder somewhere and hopefully somebody catches on? I mean, that, because some of the policies do really reflect right back to the building, the teachers, the students, and how this is going to interact.
I can speak in general, but in terms of specifics around Oakland. So in general, whenever a standing order comes out, it is distributed to all corresponding staff. Most of the time, they come in the form of an email. Sometimes they're presented during a TV session or during a faculty meeting. Jim, do you want to speak about how that's disseminated here in Oakland?
Well, just in general, like, any of the policies, like, some of them, like, having gone through them now, you find occasionally there are times when the information needs to be passed down to the staff. Good, perfect. Thank you.
Just a comment I wanted to add in regards to the policy 1648.13. So now I can speak, at least in regards to Collingswood, that testing is underway. And I do want to commend Dr. McDowell's administration for the way in which it's been implemented. It has been, I think, the least intrusive, the least disruptive, and certainly administered in a way that is certainly not intended to be punitive in any manner. And I commend the way in which it has been implemented to this point. However, on a greater scale, looking at the mandate for the vaccine requirement, it is a mandate for me personally that in substance and execution, I disagree with. So as a matter of principle, I would not be voting in favor of that. I know we will be compliant with it, we will follow it. And again, this is in a reflection, it's not a reflection on how it's been implemented. I commend administration with how we've started. But for me, as a matter of principle, it is a mandate that I do not support. So I will be voting against it.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Any other questions on anything in there? Okay, on a roll call, we haven't done this yet, have we?
No.
No, we know. I'm not used to working this late.
Pastor Beth? Get there.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Butzko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes, but no on policy 1648.13.
And Mr. Stotts?
Yes. Okay, section 15 is a public discussion. I think we took care of all that, but we'll give you a second opportunity. Not often you get a second bite of the apple, but if you have anything to bring or you've had thoughts. All right, hearing none, we'll go to item 16. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, folks, thank you for coming.